Meeting to order, first order of business will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone to our Tuesday, April nineteenth council meeting. We have a full agenda tonight, so we're gonna keep things rolling. First order of business will be our consent agenda, which is to request to approve the March fifteenth regular council meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, your motion is second. Oh, and then amend, yes, new amendment to the agenda. Add item. Item I with David Hewitt.
I'll make a motion, amend the agenda to add I.
Second.
Mr. Hewitt.
So that's gonna be our first motion to make the adjustment. Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then a motion on the consent.
Move to approve consent agenda.
And second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both saying aye. Thank you. We invited you tonight for a reason. All right, we're gonna move on to public input. We have a few items here. We have no written correspondence tonight. Item B is gonna be Good News Evangelical Church Pastor Eric Johnson. Did you wanna address council, sir? Come on up and introduce yourself. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Eric Johnson, resident Pine Island pastor of Good News E Free, been there for seven years. Our church has been at its current location since about ninety-six, and this month we submitted an application for rezoning of property we have a purchase agreement on. The stamped by Judith building up there in the corner of County Road eleven and Main Street. And that'll be coming through your guys' folders and things over the next weeks and stuff, but just wanted to kinda give you a heads up that we have been looking to do that and looking, we believe that's in the best interest, obviously, of our church, and it's a, we believe, a good and healthy, vibrant church is good for any community, so it's not, obviously, nothing official tonight, but that's, that'll be coming in the next, next month, I believe, we'll be planning and zoning and then for you guys, so. But just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much, sir. Move on to C. Is Miss Angie here?
You know, she emailed me earlier today. She's unable to make it.
Okay, did she send anything?
No, I think she said she'll come next meeting.
All right. Right along. Ms. Tyrell Lynn Bottel, welcome. Cheese Fest updates.
Yes. So I'm pleased to advise that the Cheese Festival is in the healthiest position it's been probably since I got involved twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. We have focused a lot of our efforts on providing entertainment that has minimal cost or generates revenue. We have continued to leverage and strengthen our strategic partnerships with our city council, Public Works, Fire Department Relief Association, Image Committee, and are committed to expanding those partnerships to our churches, businesses, and organizations. We continue to be immensely grateful for the sponsorships and donations from businesses and organizations. This weekend, or it'll be the first weekend in June, like always, we'll kick off with a Cheese Mart, which is always been asked. It'll be in the Creamery, and we'll have the duck race, and the beer gardens, carnival fireworks on Friday night. We will move into Saturday, where we'll have carnival kids' couple, golf tournament, and the gala will be back this year, and of course, the dance. And the Fire Department Relief Association. On Sunday, we will have, we're trying, we're working with Pastor Tony Fink on a community church service. We'll have the carnival parade and we'll maintain it from the fire department. So that is the update. We're so thankful for your continued support and very much appreciated. It's a great partnership.
Thank you. Are you doing pre-sales with the ducks or buttons or anything like that?
Yes. Dates and times to be determined, but yes, we will be doing that as well.
Quick question. It's my understanding that Johnny Mango is working with the committee for the Cheese Mart?
Yes.
Where can people find more info on that?
So we're working on updating our website, and they'll be on there and communicated through our social media. It'll be on our website. We will be doing print advertisement, digital advertisement, and radio advertisement.
Awesome. Making sure our residents know where to access that info. Thank you for putting that together.
Of course.
Thank you to you and your group. It's exciting to have Cheese Fest back.
We have a really strong board and a really strong committee and group of volunteers. It's probably one of the best groups I've had, so.
We also have a guest tonight, Major Johnson. I wasn't gonna make you wait till the very end of the meeting to introduce yourself if you'd like to come up. You want to? I'll invite you. In addition to the county.
Hi, my name is Mike Johnson. I am the new major with the sheriff's office. I started about six months ago. And I've slowly been making my way around the county, to all the townships, all the city council meetings, just trying to meet everybody, all the people that we're representing around the county. And this is actually one of my last, because we're normally represented here, and this is, I think, just about one of my last, at least the last city one. So I, I come from Brooklyn Center, which most people here are aware is much, much different than fabulous city county. And which is, is why I'm here. I really enjoy working here and the people I work with down here. Actually, I didn't bring much to present today, other than myself, and hopefully just get to meet people. The only thing really I have to update you guys on is we're one of the few lucky agencies anywhere in the state that actually is gonna be at full staff. Most people know law enforcement, very, very difficult. If you look, there's constant, everybody's hiring. We're just waiting, and we'll be back to full staff. I don't think we were below, one person below full staff for maybe a couple months. So we're trying to keep that staffing up, give you guys the best service that we're able to give you, and we appreciate everything you guys are doing. I had a couple people come and talk to me about speeding around the county, and specifically down here.
Never happened.
No, no. But just in case there is, we got just a brand-new fancy speed trailer, you know, one of them that's got the radar on it, tells people to speed. It's still in its bubble wrap, but as soon as that's all done, we're gonna be getting that out. So if there are places that you would like to see that, which I have heard one already, we're gonna make sure we get that out. And hopefully, we can kinda find out what are we looking at, 'cause that's how we can figure out how can we best deploy the resources that we have around the place. And in this case, hopefully, we'll put it down here, find out what we're looking for. That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me while I'm here?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me, mayor. I guess I've been promising since we were down in Huana Mingo for Christmas that I would be here. Just took me a little longer than I thought it would.
Yeah, it's fair to work.
Thank you. And it's you guys that, really, we appreciate you guys supporting us and helps us do the jobs we need to do. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome. All right, for those of you folks who might wanna discuss what we had at planning and zoning, when we get into the planning commission portion of the meeting, we'll be able to ask questions if you'd like. So it'll be just a few minutes. All right, councilists, move on to administration. Item A is gonna be abdo audit presentation. Are you doing that?
No, Brad is.
Welcome, Brad. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, yep. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if your mic's working great, 'cause I, you're very light when you talk, but can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
All right, I'll get started, then I'll share my screen. Currently disabled from sharing. Can we?
You should be good now, Brad.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. So can you hear me and see that screen all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so just getting into it, I'm here to present the financial statement audit from two thousand twenty-one year end. What I'll go through tonight is the, I'll go through our opinion and our responsibility in arriving that opinion. Go through the general fund results, the other governmental fund results, enterprise funds, and then your, some key performance indicators, which we have, some ratios at the end that we compare your city with other cities within the county, as well as throughout the state, so of similar size, so. We'll get into our responsibility that, and that is to give an opinion on your financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We are issuing an unmodified or a clean opinion on your statements this year, and that is the opinion you're looking for when you have a financial statement audit performed. And it's the same opinion you've received in prior years as well. So that just says, we believe everything in the financial statements is reported materially accurate and in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. The state auditor requires us to go through a series of checklists as well, as part of our financial statement audit. These include things like making sure you're invested in the appropriate investments authorized by statute. Your deposits are appropriately in the banks where by statute and insured. Takes a look at if you're doing any contract and bidding, that you're following those statutes, issuing any bonds, that you're following those statutes. So we go through those series of checklists, and if there's any compliance issues there, we don't, don't note those in the compliance letter that's at the end of your financial statements. And we are not issuing any compliance findings as well. So both, both reports are clean reports this year. Within the financial statements, we do look at your internal controls, and we're going through the, with how things are processed this city. There's one internal control finding that we're reporting this year, that's preparation of the financial statements. So this is a very common for cities of your size, the, we prepare the financial statements as part of the audit process. However, it is ultimately management's responsibility to prepare those financial statements. So we only can really put in the financial statements what, what we know and what we've been told. We don't feel anything's been left out of the financial statements, but this is ultimately just a kind of a responsibility thing. It is, it is management's responsibility to prepare them and our responsibility to audit them. So nothing to be real concerned with here, it's just, just something that's out there as an internal control issue. Now, getting into the results, general fund, you have, this shows your general fund, fund balance at year-end compared to your following year's budget. You do have a fund balance policy that you adopted a number of years ago to keep your fund balance at thirty-five percent, or keep it above thirty-five percent of your following year's budget. You can see in each of the years presented here, other than two thousand nineteen, where you slightly dipped below that, you've been above that thirty-five percent policy that you established. Your budget has steadily increased over the years, but your fund balance has stayed in line with that, with increasing to about forty-five, almost forty-five percent this year. We'll see what those increases are here on the budget to actual statement for your general fund. Revenue, revenues came in about a hundred and seven thousand dollars over what you'd budgeted. A lot of that had to do with building permits, had a good building year again this year. Building permits were about fifty-six thousand dollars over. There was some other revenue sources there over as well. Intergovernmental was over about fifty-five thousand dollars as well. It's because you received a small cities assistance grant that came, that was awarded last year to a lot of small cities, or to all the cities under five thousand population. So that's something that was budgeted. It's, it doesn't come every year, so it's, it was kind of a, it was a nice addition to your revenues this past year. So it was about sixty, you received about sixty thousand dollars in that. So that's really what made up your revenues over budget. Expenditures came in pretty close to budget at forty-three thousand dollars under budget. You did budget all your transfers in and transfers out, so overall, ended the year with about a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase in fund balance to finish at almost one point five million dollars in reserves. Take a look at where you're, if we're looking at breaking down that revenue a little bit, where it's coming from, coming from taxes, intergovernmental revenues, the majority of that comes from the state. Charges for services and then other, you can see your taxes have steadily increased over the three years presented. Intergovernmental had a kind of a spike in two thousand twenty, it was related to receiving those cares dollars in two thousand twenty and spending those. This year, this past year, received almost a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of COVID dollars, again, referred to as the ARPA dollars. Those are deposits in a different fund, a special revenue fund, so we'll talk about those in a little bit, but you dip down again, up from two thousand nineteen again, because you received that small cities assistance of about sixty thousand dollars. Expenditures, same type of chart here, with your different departments, general government, public safety, public works. Public safety increased slightly this year, just more than the other departments, and that was related to inspections, again, following the additional building permit. Amounts that came and had a good building permit year, that she had more expenses in the, in the inspection department as well. Getting into your special revenue funds, here you'll see where the ARPA dollars have deposited. The fund balance here, a hundred and nineteen, or nine hundred and nineteen dollars, that is the, this, this A, this hundred and ninety thousand dollars you received. You recognize the revenue when you spend the revenue. So you received, you received a hundred and ninety thousand dollars last year, you spent thirty-five thousand. So those two, those offset the revenue you recognized, the expense you recognized, the thirty-five thousand. So those really have no impact on fund balance, and here we're looking at fund balance. We're not looking at cash balance here. The cash balance that's left in that ARPA fund is about a hundred and fifty-five thousand, but this hundred and nineteen thousand is the interest that was earned during the year. That's unrestricted and can be used for, for anything, so. But you still do have a hundred and fifty thousand in cash in that fund. You're gonna receive the second half of that in two thousand twenty-two. So I think you have some plans on how you're gonna be spending those dollars, but that's why this ARPA fund, I mean, is only about a thousand dollars that you're seeing here, but that's just the fund balance. The other funds that had a significant increase was the library, had a twenty-two thousand dollar increase over the prior year. General fund transferred a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars into this fund, which really accounted for that, where that increase came from. And that was a budget transfer. All the other funds stayed pretty in line with, with prior years. Capra project funds, so these are funds you have set aside for either equipment or different projects you have going on in the city. Your capital equipment fund wasn't a deficit at the end of two thousand twenty. You transferred about two hundred thousand dollars of general fund, general fund dollars into this fund to bring that out of a deficit, plus you levied fifty-four thousand dollars this year. So really made up then almost that entire increase, didn't spend any dollars out of this, or significant dollars out of this fund during this year, but so you're able to bring that, that fund out of a deficit this year. The other funds had a, the New Haven Road project, you did issue bonds for this, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of bonds. So the three hundred and eight is, is just there to finish out that project. The Second Avenue construction, the one, the fund on the bottom had a hundred and seventeen, seventeen thousand dollar deficit, or increase or decrease in fund balance. That's because you, you issued those bonds in two thousand twenty, started that project, and just are working to complete that project throughout two thousand twenty-one. So there's about sixty-six thousand dollars remaining in that fund to finish that project. Then your debt service funds. If you look at the bottom chart right away, you can see the chart below shows the debt service requirements are gonna be paid out the, in these, these years. You can see in two thousand twenty-two, you have a, a big spike. You did issue this two hundred, or twenty, twenty-one refunding bond, two, two point six million dollars. That's refunding the two thousand fourteen A and the two thousand fifteen A bonds. So paying these two bonds off is really what this bike is about in two thousand twenty-two. So what we're looking for in the debts or response is making sure you have enough cash reserves to support your debt service requirements, and making sure these aren't going into a deficit balance. So these look, these look good. And getting into our water enterprise funds, our first one's the water fund. This top chart looks at your, just taking a look at operations and seeing if your operating receipts, which is the yellow bar, are, you're generating enough receipts to support both your operating dispersments, the orange, plus your debt service requirements. So in each of these years, you can say, you can see that your operating receipts are meeting those, those requirements that we're, or that we would like to see. And then you can see your cash balances below in that lower chart. The black line in that lower chart shows the minimum cash balance that we would recommend not falling below for operations. So what's that, what that is based on is fifty percent of your, of your operating costs plus your next year's annual debt service payment. So that's really there just to make sure you, you're not falling below that, so you can meet your following year's operations. And anything above that is really available for capital purchases or capital use. Same thing with the sewer fund. No bonds outstanding in this fund, but your receipts definitely are meeting your, your dispersments in this top chart, and again, you can see that with the cash balance below steadily increasing from just over eight hundred thousand in two thousand eighteen to one and a half million in two thousand twenty-one. Your cap, your operating activities have stayed pretty consistent, and see this minimum line here that we, again, wouldn't want to see go below, has stayed pretty consistent over the, the four years presented. Evergreen fund, same chart here, so this is pretty much break even as far as your receipts and your dispersments, plus the debt service requirements. Had a little bit of a spike in two thousand twenty-one with your debt service requirements, that, that bond is gonna be paid off in two thousand twenty-three. So this debt service requirements will go away, so come two thousand twenty, after two thousand twenty-three, you won't have these debt service requirements. And you can see your cash balances stayed pretty consistent over the years, had a slight decrease in two thousand twenty-one, likely if, if the rates stay the same, probably see a decrease the next two years until this bond is paid off, but you do have available resources to absorb that. Cemetery fund, much smaller scale, this scale on this top chart goes up to forty thousand. So just keep that in mind as you're looking at this chart, but definitely in the last two years, you've been able to generate, or the receipts have been able to support the dispersments here. Cash balances stayed pretty consistent over the years, about three hundred and three hundred thousand. Not a ton of activity, so your minimum operations is, this black line is pretty low, relatively. Deputy registrar fund, so again, receipts have been meeting your operations, cash balance took a dip in two thousand twenty-one. You did purchase a building, so that's really where that cash went in two thousand one, I think that was about a hundred and forty-six thousand, so really what's, what makes up this big decrease here, so. But you're still above that minimum for operations, so still, again, anything above that line is really can be utilized for capital, and that's what you utilize for in two thousand twenty-one. So nothing to, nothing concerning here with this decrease in cash balance. Overall cash within the city, just, this is all funds by type, so general fund, the caper project funds, your special revenue debt service, and enterprise funds. Have always listed here, you had about seven point two million dollars in cash investments in two thousand nineteen, and about a million dollars more in two thousand twenty-one, at eight point three million. Part of this, this cash does not include that cash that's sitting in escrow for the refunding bonds either, so this is, this is all available cash for your operations and capital. And we look at the performance indicators here, looking at tax rates and taxes per capita. So as far as tax rates, you can, in these charts, each one of them, the orange bar is gonna be other cities of similar size throughout the state of Minnesota. The yellow is gonna be cities in Goodye County, the charcoal colors, the cities in Olmsted County, 'cause you are, you do have a portion in both counties, of both, portion of your cities in both counties. So we did add both counties a couple of years ago. And then your results are, your ratio is the, the black line, so as far as tax rates, you're hovering around the eighty percent, we're not seeing any big jumps there, so same pretty consistent at that eighty-four percent for tax rate, which you can see you are slightly higher than others in Goodye County, and quite a bit higher than cities across the state. With taxes per capita, though, you are right in line following others within the, within Goodye County. So as far as what residents are paying per capita, you're right in line with others in Goodye. The debt, so this long-term debt per capita, you can see it did increase slightly in two thousand twenty-one. Is, I think it's good to point out that the addition, the, the refunding bond is included in this, as well as those other, the bonds that it's refunding. So this, this does include an extra bond in there that won't be in there next year, once those are paid off. You issued the refunding bond in two thousand twenty-one. You've already paid it off in two thousand twenty-two, but at year-end, it was still, they, they both were outstanding, so it kind of doubled up there. So having that in the formula here is about seven hundred and seven hundred and thirty dollars of debt per capita. So if you subtract that off to thirty-four ninety, you're down to about twenty-seven sixty debt per capita, which a lot closer to others in Goodye County. But still slightly higher than the other groups there. And your debt surface expenditures as a percent of current expenditures, had a slight bump in two thousand twenty, but then in two thousand twenty-one, you're real close to where you were in eighteen and nineteen. So for there, we're just looking to, that stays consistent, or the trend, a positive trend there would be that it's trending downward, so. Which from two thousand eighteen, you're at twenty-nine, almost thirty percent, you're at twenty-seven percent, so definitely heading in the right direction. And we'll look at expenditures, current expenditures per capita and capital expenditures per capita. We look at capital first. This is gonna fluctuate from year to year, depending on the projects that you have going on. You can see in two thousand twenty-one was a low year, two thousand twenty, twenty was a pretty hot, your highest year in the, in the four years presented here, as far as what you're spending per capita. But you were right in line with others in the county and throughout the state. Current expenditures, this is just your, primarily your day-to-day operations and what you're spending. And again, with your data, data operations, with cities in Olmsted and cities across the state, you're right in line with other cities of similar size. And when I say cities of similar size, it's cities of ten thousand and less than population. Then we look at the water fund debt service coverage ratio, so this is similar to the waters chart, so we're looking at before, looking at making sure your receipts are meeting your dispersments and your debt service requirements. And as you see, as you remember in that chart, you were, so anything we're looking for here, this is your net revenue from operating receipts and dispersments compared to your debt service requirement. So anything over a hundred percent, we want, try to maintain, you've been over five hundred percent in the years presented here, so. Definitely being able to cover your debt service requirements. And that is the last chart, so, so I can take any questions you may have. I think just to round it all up, I think, round it all out, had a good year, your funds are in good shape. Getting that capital equipment fund out of the deficit was, was a good sign this year, and so definitely, I think you had a good year.
Council, you got any questions regarding the audit? No questions, sir. We appreciate your presentation and your information. Very much appreciated.
All right. Thank you, and have a good night, and thanks for allowing me to do it remotely. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You have a good night.
It would be customary to make a motion to accept the report.
I'll move. Second.
Second.
Moving on to item B, it's going to be a hearing regarding the alley vacation. Do you want to present before we open for public hearing?
Sure. Uh, as you know, last council meeting, actually I believe it was two council meetings ago. Council was presented with a petition to vacate, uh, the Allier Street, which is between two properties on the northeast side of town.
Can we scroll down to the map in the packet? Should be on page one oh three.
So it's currently being used as a parking lot. The city has never maintained this. So it's being, currently being maintained by the property owners.
Take a motion to open up for a public hearing.
Second.
Favor signified by saying aye. Rod Steel, do you want to say anything or? Welcome back.
Clux of the matter is that we are maintaining it, including plowing and whatever blacktop repair and ever. Just because it is a kind of an integral part of our business parking, both Jacob and I agree. It's something we would both benefit from. The only thing I would ask the city is if they could do a locate. I know you guys want to retain the infrastructure and that's great, because I don't think we're, either one of us are planning to excavate in there. But I'd like to know where it is. Just for future, I mean, we both have discussed storage sheds. Yeah, I mean, it, uh, going to turn it into a revenue source for the city. It, you know, right now it's not generating many revenue, but it would go on the tax rolls. So give you a little bit of bump there and, and then if we did improve, we both have talked about improving that blacktop. Then we could go ahead and incorporate the whole thing. So I'll take any question.
Anybody else? Otherwise we'll take the motion to pause the public hearing.
So I'll move second.
On favor. Takes us to item C, which is going to be a resolution twenty-two dash eleven, vacating the alley.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve resolution twenty-two dash eleven.
That's a motion of second. Todd, do you have anything to add to the vacation?
I, I, I just would make the obvious, uh, point that, uh, I think you all understand, which is that there is an access, at the existing alley, you know, in, in line with the existing alley and, the, the red box does not include the access. So none of the access, to the extent that's an alley is not being, taken away from these properties. It's just the internal alleyway that no longer exists as a public easement if you approve this, uh, resolution. So property maintains access in the current location.
I noticed that it just happens to line up with egg partners back there. They're not here. There's no concern about them losing access off of First Avenue ever.
No, it's my understanding, um, Todd Robertson wasn't able to be here tonight, but it's my understanding that they, um, he had discussions and they.
They don't, doesn't bother them. Right?
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Item D, Trailhead Grill Street Dance Request and Road Closure. This is going to be down in front of their business. As a public shop or a public workshop. Is anyone here to speak about that or?
I think it's just, might be just what's in the packet.
Okay. This is for their music festival, I believe, correct?
Looks like it.
That's correct.
Brings out a good crowd.
So we're closing the street just from Trailhead past the public workshop to the corner.
And they'll use that too, I believe. They got, I think they're doing a run. If I remember correctly.
The Beer Mile.
It looks like they're just asking to close off the street, oh, adjacent to their property lines. From what I'm reading in the proposal, not all the way past the public work shed.
I think the run will take place on the street. So they're asking permission to have the run on the street.
Okay.
Start, finish line at Trailhead Grill going north toward P T M and turning around in their parking lot. So that's.
Yeah.
But this, Elizabeth, this is a request to close the road. It's just Trailhead Grill Street Dance Request and Road Closure. We're just approving the road closure. There's going to have to be a separate.
Correct. Yeah, they'll still have to apply for that on the dance.
I'll move item B approval to close the road for.
Second.
They got parking, I understand they have parking figured out. We have a motion of second, and this is just for the road closure for their music festival. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Celebrate in August. Uh, item E is going to be resolution twenty-two dash one-two, authorizing and approving a lobbyist contract. This is pertaining to our, uh, continuing work with the regional treatment plan. You want to take this one?
So a few weeks ago, uh, those on the committee, the legislative committee for the North Sumro Sanitary District, met with two different lobby firms. Uh, we thought it was best for the project to hire a lobbyist, just due to time constraints, since we're trying to get this on the bonding bill by the end of May, and then also just, um, to take some workload off of staff. And so we wouldn't have to be going to the cities and lobbying on the city's behalf. So we met with two different lobby firms and the lobby firm, uh, that's presented before you was, uh, a less expensive option between the two. And they offered more staff to work on the project. So they have three staff members that are lobbying on behalf. They also have an established relationship with Prairie Island Indian Community who hasn't, um, okayed the fact to use the same lobbyist as that.
I move approval of resolution twenty-two dash twelve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
The cost is split between all the communities.
Yep, it was divided equally. So it'd be four thousand five hundred dollars per beauty and this would come out of the sewer.
Yeah, each city's taken the resolution before their councils to prove it and, um, this group came highly recommended and, and it's going to help advocate. So that would be good. Anyway, motion of second, um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Resolution twenty-two passes. Moving on to item F, which will be resolution twenty-two thirteen in support of Minnesota House files two eight two one. Minnesota File two six seven zero. This is pertaining to radio communication systems, equipment grant, which is going to benefit everyone in our county.
So as you may remember, um, quite some time ago, you passed a resolution in support of the same thing, only, um, asking the county to use their ARPA funds, to purchase radios. Uh, they, at the time, the current, um, information that was provided to them, they didn't think they could use radios. And so, um, they chose not to. However, now there is a similar bill, um, in both the House of Representatives and the State Senate. Uh, so there are many communities throughout the state of Minnesota who are passing these resolutions in support, to use those funds for small cities and radios.
This is, this is going to affect an entire county. It's exciting and it's updating equipment that's outdated and trying to get cars for single radios is an absolute nightmare.
It's going to keep our first responders safe. That's huge.
I'll move resolution twenty-two thirteen.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any further discussion?
When does the legislative session end or when will we know more on this?
Thirty-first, May thirty-first.
Oh, okay. So it'll end on thirty-first and if there's.
So we should have an update by next meeting.
Probably not until June, since it ends the thirty-first.
Right, right, okay.
And that's if they, um, pass something by the thirty-first, it may move into a special session as well.
Right, yeah. So similar to that previous action item, you know, many communities are also, showing their support for these two bills. Okay.
They are putting them before councils. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Resolution twenty-two thirteen passes. On to item G. Resolution twenty-two fourteen, adopting roster Olmsted Council of Governments Organization Agreement.
So as you know, Pine Island is a, um, part of ROCOG, um, and they have not updated their bylaws, or their agreement since two thousand six. So this is just an update, uh, to those bylaws, which Pine Island is a part of.
Working with other communities.
I'll move resolution twenty-two fourteen for the ROCOG.
Second.
With a motion of second to approve the ROCOG agreement. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Resolution twenty-two twenty-one is going to be approving election judges for Congressional District One Special Primary Elections, which is coming up fairly soon.
So there's a special election on May twenty-fourth, uh, and we need to approve our election judges by the end of April. So this is a handout, uh, as we finalize election judges. We most likely won't use all the election judges on the list, but the list is the election judges that we use for a general, but, we don't need as many since this, uh, special election will be for the Olmsted County portion of town only.
I'll move resolution twenty-two twenty-one.
I'll start.
Motion second. In favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Here is under item, aye. Mr. Hewitt, you're up.
I appreciate it.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you guys so much. David Hewitt, one fifteen South Main Street, Pine Island. I appreciate you guys squeezing the on. Thanks for working with the administrator to do that. Um, some of you have had a chance to meet with this month and discuss this particular project. For those of you that I haven't, uh, been able to get connected to with this month, um, I apologize. You will still be hearing from me as we move forward. Um, so if you know, I've had the privilege of spending the last two summers, uh, countless hours down at Trailhead Park selling ice cream. Uh, so I've had, uh, the opportunity to really watch a, what I believe is a transforming trend hitting Pine Island, and that's the e-bike, uh, market. Um, these consumers are very different than your traditional cyclists and the fact that they're looking to linger around, eat lunch, dessert, spend time in boutiques and kind of bum around town. So, I've really seen sort of this opportunity to, uh, have a little bit warmer welcome, uh, for people as they're asking for where to go for entertainment, food, shopping, et cetera. And so this summer, we will not have our ice cream trailer down at the park as we'll be open, uh, downtown. Uh, but we really don't want to lose the opportunity to welcome, uh, these folks. So, uh, I've been kind of brainstorming ways to do that. And one of those is this opportunity in front of us, which is a, uh, vintage style street and popcorn wagon. Uh, it used to be at Apache Mall when I was a kid. Some of you might remember that. Uh, we have the opportunity to purchase that, uh, with the purpose of using it, as a tool for local nonprofits to raise funds for their organizations. So I've spent the last about month or so, uh, meeting with both city staff, officials, uh, many different nonprofits, organizations, looking for, uh, support in three different forms. Financially, uh, support in the form of volunteers to run, uh, this, uh, trailer on weekends, uh, to earn funds for the organization. And, uh, third, just cheering it on, right? They see the vision. Uh, and they can necessarily support it with staff or funds, but they want to see it happen. So, uh, the response has been overwhelming. Uh, we've received a lot of financial commitments as well as volunteer commitments. Enough that I'm now here to present to you to ask for an exemption, uh, to the mobile food unit permit that we have. Um, and the exemption we're requesting is to have the hours of time, modified so that this trailer can be set up seasonally, uh, between, uh, Creamery and Borrow Bike, um, as a tool for our nonprofits. Uh, we have, uh, the offsite commissary, the insurance with the city, the permit with the city, um, and we have the egg licensing. So we're prepared and ready to do this. Uh, the owner of the trailer has agreed to sell it, uh, in May for us to utilize in Pine Island. So the reason I'm here today is to seek that exemption, uh, so that I can continue meeting with the nonprofits and really solidify, uh, the support as we move into May. Um, and so that's why I'm here. If you guys have any questions, I'd be excited to talk about it.
It's my understanding organizations will have the opportunity to hand out brochures and literature at this welcome station as well. So it's not just, a food vending opportunity. It's that.
Right. It's, it's designed to be a welcome or information booth. So we've been talking with businesses, nonprofits, uh, those who could have brochures, menus, et cetera. It's really designed to be a community asset is how we view it.
Yeah.
Would, would he need to use, get a new permit? He said modify those.
Yeah, what I would suggest is just to keep them separate is to possibly do a new permit. Um, and we could possibly waive the fees since it is benefiting the city as a welcome wagon. Just so then there's no crossover between. I understand you're using the same food license, but that way there's a permit for each trailer.
And I did propose either or, either exemption to what we have or a new one. You know, so the challenge is, is we, we will still have our trailer, which we'll utilize in the park for a little bit at the beginning of the summer, but then it'll be gone. Uh, but to have still the opportunity to take that to other local events is beneficial to have two permits. Yeah.
So this is being pitched as a welcome wagon for the city and a city asset. Do we have city? We have publications, documents, and we have propaganda ready to go in it for the city? Otherwise, I don't.
I guess.
Maybe I shouldn't phrase it that way. Not necessarily a, an asset for the city of Pine Island, but more of the community of Pine Island. Um, but yeah, I mean, at the city, like the history center, for example, is going to have brochures and different things. So.
The model for nonprofits to fundraise, will they, they'll be able to stuff this thing and sell popcorn?
Yeah, so there'll be pre-packed food items. There is popcorn available to be made if they wanted to do that. Yep. So like the Papa Concerts, a good example where, uh, the Lions Club, for example, has said, hey, we could do the Papa Concert, and give the funds to Papa, since Papa doesn't really have membership to work that way. And so there's some sort of cross, um, synergy we're seeing, between organizations as it relates to this.
At some point, point Borrow Bike had a trifold brochure. So I'm sure there's, different things in the city we can also promote, and communicate with this wagon as well. I do see it, we have to look at the wider community lens, and think how we can all uplift one another.
Where, uh, the law enforcement side of me is coming a little bit at night. Where would you put it?
Yeah, no. So that's the reason we're asking for this exemption is, it's not really a unit that's designed to be, like the current permit, that's part of the exemption. So, so it is designed to be there seasonally. Uh, we're looking at canopies like they use in kiosks where you wrap it, lock it. Um, there will be some security features built into the trailer. Um, you know, we're hoping that the Creamery can be a tool for camera, uh, as well on that. You know, we have insurance, we are taking a risk. You know, that's sort of the nature of it. Yeah.
The one, the one thing I'd like to address too is just the location of this. You know, especially if the, if the cheese factory is rented out. Whether, you know, if that trailer can be, if it was able to be on the other side of the Borrow Bike building or if it's.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I chose that location, one was, uh, the accessibility from the trail, you know, as a welcome wagon. That asphalt pad that's right there is a really nice pad for it. It's kind of between the two buildings, so it's not really interfering with, the facade or the view. Um, it is close to Borrow Bike, which is sort of a tool that we're using as well to interact with people. Um, so that's the preferred preference. Um, we've had conversations with like, for example, the Cheese Fest, where we'd actually move it to be utilized more as an information welcome booth for them versus it being up there. So, it's really intended to be in one spot, but could move around the park for special events.
You've talked to the festival board about this being placed, right, right there or somewhere else? I mean, layout of food units is an issue.
Well, and speaking of laying out of food units, I'm just thinking too, when we've set up in the past, there's a clear zone required off those power lines. And I can't remember what it is off the top of my head.
It's fifteen feet.
So fifteen feet from the center of that power line eats into that pad quite a ways. Is it going to clear the power lines above based on, their requirements? My first question. We probably need to step that off to make sure. Um, and then my other comment would be just that when Papa Concerts perform, they typically set up, um, on the south end there facing back to the north. So, I mean, I guess we could just have them sit around on the north side facing south. Or maybe we look at making a pad right alongside the, um, bike path too. I don't know.
And it has wheels on it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to.
Right.
Some of this out. That's, yeah, I think I wrote in the packet. I like, I like the idea. I think there's some great synergy that can be found between those units and working with all the different stuff with Cheese Fest and.
Who's going to manage the schedule of the?
Yeah, so we're going to have a digital calendar that's available for the nonprofits. Yeah, so we're going to have a digital calendar that's available for the nonprofits to sign up. Kind of like a Saturday genius type of thing. Friday from four, you know, nine to four, they could sign up for that, you know. And they'll, they'll have to sign a waiver. There's, I mean, there's, there's legal. Yeah, there's, there's kind of a whole sort of training and that, that will depend on the group. Some will not choose to prepare food, Mike. It'll just be prepackaged products in which, you know, the training is minimal, right? Yeah, there's going to be some learning for sure. Northfield has one of these in their downtown that they use and the retirement association runs it. So we've kind of been talking with them a little bit about how their model works and.
So you'll own the inventory and do the reconciliation and then pay the nonprofits whatever.
Yeah, so that's kind of falling on us to manage that, yep. Yep. So it's going to be a, it'll be a learning experience for sure.
We looking for a motion on this or?
Be in action.
Yeah.
Would you say, or what are you recommending?
I guess I haven't had a lot of time to bet this. I just got this on Friday. I know Mr. Hewitt and I talked. I don't know, four to six weeks ago. I can't remember. I, I haven't talked to him since, so I kind of have the same information that is in front of you. My only concern is if people actually pay to rent out the Creamery. And so if they don't want the wagon in operation, I think that we need to respect the people who pay to use the Creamery. I know there's wedding receptions and things like that. So if they don't want a welcome wagon outside their wedding reception, I think we, we should honor the reservations of the Creamery and not have it in operation during that time unless the renters approve that. That would be my main concern.
So our next meeting is May 17th. I mean, is there a way we can authorize you to move forward on this or would you rather bring it back to the full council on the 17th to?
It's up to you guys to make the decisions.
Well, and it is time sensitive, so I, I would like to see, I would like to see this going forward. It's a new concept for us, so we have to have some leeway to be able to.
I'll make the motion. Bob will probably correct me, but I'll make the motion to approve it pending a permit and the ability to move it if, if we need to. The power lines are the rental, so.
Courtney, can we see where it's sitting decently enough to protect it?
Is there, is there something with this permit and approval that it's just? I mean, I hope with us for it and I hope it's a smashing success, but if it's got all kinds of problems, we can reevaluate it at the end of the season, right? I mean, next season.
We have to reapply.
Yeah, so let's take.
This will be for this season only.
Sorry, I meant with security cameras.
I'll second Jason's motion.
And then we can answer Mike's question. Bob, you go first.
Well, I was just going to say, I appreciate the fact that we have a motion in front of us now to, to non a little bit. I wonder if we could have the motion be to direct staff to bring forward a way for this to be approved rather than approve this subject to the details to be presented on the 17th. And the reason I say that is because I'm not certain I understand what a variance or an exception to the hours of operation language means. Cause I didn't know about this tonight, so I didn't look at your code about that. So I'm not sure how we would, exactly how we would mechanically do that. And then I, it sounds like there are a few details that would be included in the permit if a second permit were issued to allow this about when it does have to be moved or at least out of the way, where it can go on the, you know, it sounds like there's some details that have to be approved. So it's if the sentiment of the council is let's make this happen, how about we just have a motion to direct staff to make it happen and bring back the way to make that happen for approval at your next meeting. And I appreciate that leaves a little bit of risk hanging out there, but if the council, if y'all say you want to do it, we'll find a way to do it. It's just, I don't know how we're going to do it.
When it gives a wisdom set up, it can be done. Shine. It works.
Yep. So amend my, my motion to include what Bob said.
So I'll support the idea. We'll just kind of come up with a game plan and we'll get an application.
It's enough commitment for me to keep working with the different organizations.
No, but we're going to, this will, this will be nice. So we have a motion to amend the motion.
And I'll second that amendment.
Second on that, okay. This, what, what I'm excited about too with this is it, it's bringing something that not many other communities have. Which is going to be fun. And I, I really think with Mr. Hewitt's ambition. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And again, for any organizations that you may not have contacted or may still be interested, if they can get ahold of you for scheduling, fantastic. Thank you.
All in favor of the amended, the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Mayor, and then just editorially, I have to say, as an avid mountain biker, e-bikes are cheating. Fair enough.
You might want to come hang out at the wagon.
Yeah, right. That's right.
All right. We're going to move into planning commission. We have had quite a lengthy meeting tonight at the planning and zoning, so we got a lot to eat through here. So right here on board, we're going to go through item eight ordinance 155 approving zoning map amendments for the Pine Prairie. Second. There's going to be another word behind second. Anyways, item A subdivision.
Yep. All right. All right. So it's a 29 lot subdivision. And again, it covers about 13 acres of property out there on East End Hillfront Drive. And the, it is currently zoned agricultural. And for this to be a residential subdivision, we're looking to rezone the property to R1 or suburban residential. And Bob pointed out that instead of the resolution here, we need an ordinance. So we need the ordained language, not the resolved language. So we're going to change the formatting on there. The content will relatively stay the same, but that's right. But we'll have some ordains in there, so.
I move approval of ordinance 155.
Second. Second.
More people to buy popcorn.
There you go. All right. Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Vigor, moving on to resolution 22 dash 19 for the Pine Prairie second zoning district amendment. That, that.
Right, that's.
So I think we can.
Yep.
Exactly. We kind of doubled up. I put ordinances on the agenda. Craig puts a lot of resolutions.
So we're scratching B is what you're saying?
One, yeah.
So we're good to go past C then?
Correct. Yep. Yep.
One question I did have out there is. Is there any contact with the developers about garbage control?
Yep, we have taken care of it with them.
All right. Resolution 22 dash 15 approving the final plat for Pine Prairie second.
Yep. So again, the preliminary plat was approved last month. The final plat went to the planning commission last week. They are recommending approval with the conditions that we have outlined in the resolution. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
Time frame, like any updates with the, with the blacktop on that road to access the development or?
Yeah, we attended a meeting at the New Haven Township and we're looking to meet again with them next week, next Tuesday night.
It's going well?
It's going. It's on. Yep, we're in discussions.
Move approval of resolution 22 dash 15.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion?
Mayor, just comment. So a condition of the approval is that the city and the developer will, will enter into a development agreement. I take it in as much as this is a second addition. We have a subdivision that's been discussed previously that we assume is going to be similar to this new one. And so we don't expect a whole lot of, we don't, we don't have to expect a lot of work to be done on that. Yep. Okay. Fair enough. Thanks, Mayor.
All with a favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Six approving zoning map amendments for the Pine Island Heights, which is on the other side of the city.
So, Mr. Mayor, I've got some notes here from the lengthy planning and zoning commission meeting. Would you like to talk through some of that stuff in the hopes that we can alleviate some of the questions that the people had? Or would you like to wait for the actual resolution? Where would you like to start with that information?
Let's take a motion and a second and then we'll get into discussion. And yeah, if we want to go through those points and then if the folks here have questions they can ask. Do we have to open up for a public hearing on that?
No.
No, that was at the planning and zoning. This was just to let people discuss and talk. Then I will move approval of ordinance 156 approving the zoning map amendment for Pine Island Heights.
Second.
Motion and a second. Get into some discussions. JP, do you want to cover the points that were discussed?
Yeah, I've got, I think, most of the big ones and I think Mike took some notes as well. And if I missed anything, I know we've still got some folks here in attendance. So I think the first biggest one was talking about this would be in regards to windmill second. One of the residents asked about those being on private well and septic. When the future and end goal would be to eventually have Campbell Court all on city services. I'm not sure if those lots are on one shared well, one shared septic, or three separate wells, three separate septics. So that'd be the first question I think that probably people would want to know.
I believe it's one well and three septics.
Okay. And I'm assuming that they would be set up where eventually when Campbell was taken over and we ran city services down the center of Campbell, that it would be stubbed to the new portion of the subdivision. So they wouldn't have to tear up the new portions of Windamere or Windmill to do that? That feasible, accurate, not accurate?
I believe the last section that we get, did talk over that. But they weren't, sure has a little bit of that timeframe of me. So I believe that the city.
Yep.
If it happens to be 20 years or whatever.
So five years from now or 20 years from now, I'd be ripping up the existing two cul-de-sacs to put city infrastructure under them.
Yeah. So, so this is the applicant Dave Derby back here.
Yep.
So, so yeah, there's enough room to have the utilities in on the other sides. We wouldn't have to go down the center. But, but that, that would be the plan is to run them outside of the roadway instead of right down the center.
The second one, I think we kind of covered with planning zoning recommendation to us, which I think would then take over as a part of the minor sub. Sorry, actually the preliminary plat, which would be the drainage for the two end lots on the eastern side of Campbell Court. I think that's pretty much taken care of to the satisfaction of those homeowners as well as Mr. Derby. The last two are kind of a little bit of a, how do you fix something that maybe wasn't adequate to begin with? And that's pedestrian safety and access. Eighth Street Southwest is Eighth Street Southwest. It wasn't put in with ideas of sidewalk down the whole thing. So I don't know how we address that issue as a council. Nor do I know how we address access at this point in time. I think in the grand scheme of things, there is potential for another access off of, I'm just going to call it the Burn Church Road because I can't remember what the number is. 24. So I don't think we can address the ease of access concerns, at least at this point, other than to say that in the future, as that area gets developed off, it will kind of sub naturally take over. I will also say that there's areas in town, for example, the golf course, that are just as restricted one way in, one way out at this point in time as well. Those are the main notes I had. Mike, did you have some other stuff? Okay.
We, and while back to your council head, there was some discussion on that. The public safety component of Eighth Street and it is, you got a blind intersection there. It falls to the homeowners out in that area to slow down, you know, and, and that's one thing that we have to, we can be sympathetic with that speed. But people using that road are generally the ones living out there too. You know, you can't have a deputy sit out there the entire day trying to direct traffic either. So that is one thing we can look at moving forward here with, you know, another access in and out, but also that pedestrian safety. We have that neighborhood right to, with the seventh street that has sidewalks, you know, that people can use to make their way into town as well. So that was, I want to reassure the homeowners too, that the council heard that concern.
Yeah, I don't know if we have space along the south side of Eighth Street, you know, from Champagne up to do any sort of a connecting sidewalk. It'd be a scary sidewalk because it's an awful steep hill, but. I don't, I don't see a way to fix that problem, I guess, easily. Or that maybe if there was any way to work out connecting in it into Ninth Avenue Southwest. But I don't believe there's sidewalks in that either, actually, now that I think of it.
We have to continue to work on it and keep it top of mind. Cause I'm in favor of this development.
Yep.
Adding more houses.
Absolutely.
It's not going to. It's not certainly going to make it better. That's, it's one of the worst along with on the way out to the all roads. They're terrible.
Craig, not to jump the gun. Can you, can you say long-term plans are going to allow for secondary access into that neighborhood? I mean, you see a lot of side roads that, I think, once they're extended, you got 27 and 24 right there on either side.
Right. So one option for a secondary access would be the extension of Ninth Avenue. That's a little ways out. So if you scroll down, no, I think that just dead ends right now at the property line. And that property line is the end of the city limits there. So if, yeah, I don't, yeah, there you go. So that's part of the Champagne Hills subdivision there. So Ninth Avenue is just south of Campbell Court there. Heading to the west, so. Yep, to the north of that, right to the north of Med City, lock and then to the west. Yep, right there. So if that extended eventually someday, that could provide that connection up to Eighth Street to provide a secondary access at least through Ninth Avenue over to Tenth Street and then up to Seven and then up, you know, so that way it would be a way around. Not a direct route.
Just looking at your plat map, can you drag, I guess, up towards, so we can see Eighth Street over here, please? It looks to me like in lot 23, you may have put together some sort of a easement where could another road come out of what I would call the southwest corner of Eighth Street there in the southeast corner of lot 23 that could come around and kind of be that tie in to the Ninth Avenue or Tenth Street or any of that in there? Is there the ability to give some sort of an easement there?
Yeah, possible, possibly. Yeah.
It would just seem to make sense that that'd be a way we could finally tie in into that upper Champagne Hills area. Just planning for the future, trying to make it easy for the next subdivision decide to do.
Yeah, so that's on the west end of the, of the property, which could be extended to the south.
So then just playing devil's advocate, then we run into another situation with Campbell where we have a bubble that kind of does nothing. Does that eventually get deeded back to the homeowner that's on block one lots 17, 18, 19 when the bubble goes away? It's again, just trying to.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. It couldn't, couldn't be. I mean, the, the right of way would have to be vacated in order for that to happen, but.
Yeah.
Does this answer some of the questions that you had? I know there's no confirmed. I would disagree with, I would disagree though with the comments that you say we don't consider or think about public safety. But that's, that's why we pay to have sidewalks. And I know like, there's some neighborhoods up there, you know, like Campbell Court doesn't have sidewalks. there's some neighborhoods up there, you know, like Campbell Court doesn't have sidewalks up inside there yet, but that was not, you know, initially part of the city's plan, you know, back in the day, but um, but that's also why I'm glad that you all came this evening to address that, you know, because then it's on public record and it gives us an opportunity to address and try to rectify some of it as well. Well, yeah, it, it's a very, very long stretch, and you're correct on that, on that sense with the housing going on there. I'll try and take fire trucks down that as well, if part of the park can be, you know, but that's where it also falls back to um, people to slow down. You know, and it's easier said than done.
Unfortunately, it's a little bit of a limiting factor of you can only put roads in on land you own. You can only develop on land you own, and the pure fact of the matter is, right now, whoever owns the land that's straight south of Ninth Avenue Southwest, which would connect up to County Road thirteen, if that fit into the city of Pine Island's master plan, hasn't brought forth a developer or a person that wants to spend the money to do that infrastructure. The city could, but that would mean a huge tax raise for everybody else in the city. And we could do the same thing out on Eighth Street Southwest and the go, uh, southeast and the golf course. But there, again, we'd be putting a road in, in the middle of nowhere, until a developer comes through and actually does something with it. And those costs are typically borne by the developer, not the city. So until the land is ready, we can't do anything with it. We've just got to work with everybody to do the best we can, whether it's extra patrol, you know, finding people and saying, you know, drive like your kids live here, as much as the cliched sign is.
There'll be a development agreement for this. So, some consideration for park space. Right, I mean, we've typically taken that, those dollars and, I mean, in other areas, we're using them towards bike trails and trying to do some of those kinds of things. I just, yeah, I mean. Can we remedy it tonight? No, I, you know, is it enough to turn down the growth, growth of our town? I don't think so, but yeah, I mean, I'm sitting here saying we need to find the money and
Yeah.
and give sidewalks to that area of town.
Dave, I've seen some really great subdivisions. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we need to put cement sidewalk in front of every house out there, but is there an alternative that we could set this subdivision up to have something?
Well, that, that cost is a real.
Yep.
That's true to be the citizens, right? But, almost same point, whoever starts across, I don't believe.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Um, my fear is that, you know, everything's all now, it's your slow balance and um, I guess I would rather just put um, uh, open plan, open plan, but that whole section. We had, it's always in my head, at the time I went, so we're doing this one, but getting back to twenty-four is the answer.
Yeah.
Um, whatever. So that, that I was talking about, that first block, five, just the first land in the south. Slowly work your way back to twenty-four, that's feel very, very little. But, there's just that.
Mm-hmm.
But, that come across the field is really easy to break. Versus necessarily this.
All right, Colin, so we got ordinance one five six that we were discussing, um, we have a motion on this ordinance?
We do. Uh, I motioned, Jason seconded.
Perfect, and you're in discussion, correct? All right, um, any other discussion?
This is ordinance one five six.
Yes. You need to take a vote on that. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Good discussion. Okay, we don't have to do twenty-two twenty, correct? Okay, we're gonna move on to resolution twenty-two sixteen, which is approving the minor subdivision for Pine Island Heights.
I'll move twenty-two sixteen.
Second, Greg, anything?
No, this is um, this is one planted lot right now. It's a forty acre lot, and so this minor subdivision is just splitting off that fourteen point three acres um, on the lower lying area of the developments, um, to the rest of it. So just creating a separate parcel. The ma- main reason for that is the timing of it, or the uh, possible sale of that.
Favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post same sign. I'm curious, going on to resolution twenty-two seventeen, approving preliminary class for Windermere, which state second.
I'll move resolution twenty-two seventeen.
Second.
Anything further on this, Craig?
Um, yeah, so the planning commission did, did hear this, and um, again, we heard some of the uh, concerns that the residents had, but one item that um, they, and, and we did discuss all the, the grading uh, concerns and that, but on condition uh, here, I don't have a yeah, it's under the preliminary.
The recommendation, that's number two.
Yeah, yep, so the number two, thanks Elizabeth. So that, uh, they asked us to specifically look at lots one and two, block two, and lots one and block one of of Campbell. In this addition. So that was, that was one of the items there that they asked us to include um, as their recommendation to the council.
The drainage, I mean, we can, the drainage has to get, it's been years, I mean, that.
Right.
Yeah, we gotta do better, that's all. We gotta police, I hate to say police, but we gotta police this thing so that it gets back to these people don't have, that's not right. So, I just want to make sure we manage that well, so that.
This is Johnson. You're talking about that growth right off, it looks like a growth.
Yeah.
This is construction traffic we talked about.
Yeah.
You're in seven-ten, correct?
What year is this lot number one, right, when the old pole was there?
Yeah.
Hmm.
What can we do?
My only fear with uh, making some sort of a waterware ditch there is that would add to the water flow. They would then roll past there and either have to go down between seven-ten and seven-twenty, or seven-twenty and seven-thirty, from what it looks like, unless it could be carried the entire way down southwest Campbell Court, but that's taught, you're, now you're talking a lot of water and a lot of cul- uh, culverts in people's driveways.
Right.
My, my favorite, just the next plot down
Seven-twenty.
That, that there's culverts under all of their driveways. At one point, that city, she doesn't know why. So now we have all these ditches that gather up a queue of water, which the kids all love, right, which is but, and it is keeping great, and we have no such ditch because all of our dr- just people less, now with this elevation it comes to so could there be that, even for a ditch where it's getting evaporated in our yard, like other homes, culvert's all good.
Craig, I, because there's no curb and gutter up there, correct, right now?
Right.
So, what, what would be i- either an immediate fix or a long-term fix? We heard the discussion during P and Z uh, on that, and it's not, it's not the homeowner's fault that that was modified.
So a couple of things. One is the, the cul-de-sac itself. I mean, it, it used to be the end of the, of Campbell's, or Campbell Court, right? So that's why there was a cul-de-sac there, and now um, since it's not the end, it is a question to lock that off and create that be, you know, a straight through instead of um, having that. And that was, I don't know if that was your.
If you can, put out some uh, reflectors on every phone. You do? Okay. Sorry, well, tried.
That's, yeah, that bubble on the top there, um, yeah, it could be, we pushed right past that, that cul-de-sac. Is it worth the city, I, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn, but being able to just straighten that road out and get rid of that culvert, or the cul-de-sac?
That's what, that's what the question is, because it's kind of a hybrid um, cul-de-sac anyway, it doesn't really.
It wasn't a standard size cul-de-sac from the day it was built.
Correct, you can see, you know, um, in comparison to a standard cul-de-sac, it just doesn't meet the standard, so. I mean, I guess if you'd like the city to take a look at that, we can.
I, I was just, if we can do that, I, I, I feel that this is something we can remedy fairly quickly and easily to help out.
Is part of the problem that truck traffic doesn't know that that's not a through street? Is a Band-Aid immediate solution fixed to be to put a sign on the corner of Campbell Court and Eighth Street saying no through street, or would that not?
There's no outlet sign if I, is there any?
Oh, okay.
There's dead end and no outlet signs all over.
Truck traffic's not for, I mean, there's an index site for truck traffic up that street.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, I think something temporary.
No, Craig, I appreciate that, if that's, if that, if that Todd's not here, but we can volunteer him.
And I think Mayor, uh, to the extent, look to me a little bit, uh, I think this developer can't be made to pay to correct that uh, situation. Clearly, clearly it's within the city's legal authority to get rid of the wall there, or make a through street, or whatever. I mean, it's all been city right away now, so um, so we, we have power of abuse over that, but I don't think we can look at this development for it. So for tonight's action, I think, you can tell Craig to look at it, but yeah, I mean, certainly they can volunteer, but.
I won't ask you to do that. All right, this is all pertaining to resolution twenty-two seventeen.
Yes, you do. I was, I moved, Jason seconded.
Going to amend it, good. Have the city staff look at the bubble there, fix it?
Sure, I'll amend my original motion to uh, look at city, have city staff look at ways to fix the bubble to help to alleviate the water runoff concerns.
Second.
Motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign, resolution twenty-two seventeen passes. We'll wrap up this discussion with resolution twenty-two eighteen, approving a conditional use permit for new law, and this is gonna be five zero eight one seven two hundred and third avenue, which is gonna be right off of County Road eleven across the bridge.
I'll move resolution twenty-two eighteen.
Second.
Motion of second, this is regarding their having a shed built on the property. Still agriculture on that side?
So I have some questions. I read in the packet, the um, something about commercial use, and if it's been used for commercial, it needs to be updated, correct? Did I miss, did I read that correctly?
Correct, thank you, Mr. Derby.
So, huh, if the codes and construction standards are different from agricultural to commercial building of a pole shed, how do you update it after the fact?
You would, well, it would be costly, and we'd need to have it be commercial and used for um, for the public. You'd have restroom, you'd have uh, site improvements, uh, such as successful uh, access into the building and different things. So, um, that, those would be some of the site improvements, and also um, some of the building permits, so, or some of the building improvements as well.
Because also, there's snow and wind loading differences between agricultural and commercial too. Which goes all the way back to spacing for posts, doubling up rafters, so I'm worried that we're opening Pandora's box by saying you can build an agricultural building, and it could eventually have to try to be a commercial building. Could the basic structure be required to be built to commercial standards, oh, but give them a waiver to not do restrooms, ADA, that sort of stuff?
I don't think they have any plans to turn it commercial. So they're, they're more a wholesale business where they, they take their produce elsewhere. They are never seeking to have people come to them.
What about the next owner? That's, I mean, we got here today with a neighbor who's upset because this was going to be a church.
Well, I don't know if it's fair to make a current owner, they're trying to build a building to their personal use, and
Yeah.
I don't think it's fair to force them to build it to a future owner standards, I guess.
I'm just trying to.
Well, and Mayor, if I may, a council member, I mean, it, it's okay, we don't very frequently do it, but we, it would be okay when the day comes that there's a request to rezone the property to allow commercial uses, non-agricultural uses. It's fine to condition an approval or rezoning on you'll tear down the building, or you won't use the building for commercial purposes unless, or, you know, you can imagine a number of ways to craft that approval to not allow a building to be used, because you're absolutely right. An agriculturally approved of building from a building permit standpoint is not satisfactory for allowing the public in there for commercial purposes. It's not, so that would be totally appropriate at that time.
So if they were to start suddenly bringing pe- if someone was to suddenly start bringing people in to buy their wares in that building, we, we have the teeth to legally stop them.
It's.
Yes.
Right.
Because they are using it for commercial purposes currently. So this is, this would be approval for agriculture, not commercial purposes.
Right, so if, if the use changed at all, um, the city would have um, the option to, or the right to um, discontinue the conditional use permit. They wouldn't be allowed to do that. If, we did meet with the applicant, we met with the building uh, sectors, so we, you know, we did walk through all of this, and because that's really what, what brought this up was, is it going to be used for uh, for public use or not, and, and
And they're still, but, I mean, obviously, they're still covered by the ordinances on what animals could be there as well, correct? Three chickens? No more.
That's my understanding, that's my understanding. They don't plan on having any animals. Yeah.
Was, was here.
Do we wear anymore?
Yeah, okay, Mike move, you seconded. That was it, I just want to make sure that we're protected as good as we can be.
All right, council, all in favor of their permit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Into eighteen passes, we're gonna move on to public works in a hearing. Building quote to replace water meters. Which one are those?
So there is a quote before you, sorry, I'm trying to get to it here, packet, so you don't misquote the numbers. There's a quote before you, um, we met with the utility committee uh, to discuss this issue, because the current water meter is that the city um, was using. Our meter reader is no longer supported by software, so um, pretty much if our meter reader broke, we would have a lot of difficulty, um, we would have to manually read our water meters. So the utility committee came together to uh, come up with a plan, and we're going to try to do a quarter of the city um, repl- we would have to manually read our water meters, so the utility committee came together to, uh, come up with a plan, and we're going to try to do a quarter of the city, um, replacing water meters each year, and so the new water meters that we were testing this past year, um, in different houses, has been working well, so that is what we are recommending, and they're actually cellular. And so staff can actually read the meters from, um, City Hall, Public Works doesn't have to drive around and actually manually read them all. Also, there's an app that homeowners can use to, they can manage their own water from the app, they, I think it's, breaks it down to fifteen minute increments, so you can see how much water you use every fifteen minutes. Um, so that's available as well to, uh, users, so that they can sign up to get notifications on the app if they have a high usage, so they know if they have a water leak, uh, something like that. So, we installed those in any new builds in the last year, and then also, uh, in city staff homes, so that they could kinda test it out, and work out any kinks, and so far, we haven't found any negatives about it, uh, as you see, it's a pretty hefty price, we do have, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted in the water account for capital outlay purchases, so, this would be covered under, um, the budget. We also have, uh, quite a few reserve funds, where if we need to tap into that for staff resources, we're still trying to figure out the exact plan of how we're going to be replacing these, uh, there are companies that we can use, a third party to, they kinda make all the appointments, they kinda set it up, so we're, we're not quite at that stage of planning how we are going to transfer them all over, however, um, we did wanna start purchasing them, because they're increasing drastically, like everything else with inflation, and so, um, our rep advised us that if we're going to move, we should probably, um, order these sooner than later.
You can't find, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is just a one-time fee, there's not extra fees for residents to access information on the app, or
The app will be free to residents, um, the city is charged, I don't wanna misspeak, it's, I, I believe it's less than a dollar, um, fee for the cell, the cellular per meter. And so that would most likely then come before council in our usage, where that would get added to, uh, the user's water bill, but again, I believe it was less than a dollar, um, per, uh, per user.
Okay, and this is just installation, installation costs we're looking at?
No, you're looking at hardware, so, purchasing the actual meters.
The installation cost will be borne by
The city.
So that's outside of the hundred and twenty-six, eight thirty?
Correct, and so that's what we're trying to figure out, if we're going to be using internal staff, um, or not. Public Works is pretty busy during the summer, but during the winter, they do have some, um, that's usually when we get caught up on inside projects, and so, they thought that they might have some time. Um, but that's where we're working with our rep to see the best way of replacing the meters, because obviously it would be pretty extensive between, um, Public Works and staff, um, because we would have to set up appointments with everybody.
Surprise, there's only four hundred and fifteen meters.
So we only have about third, twelve hundred? Or a third, yeah, so we have about
Well, that's right, sorry.
We have about twelve hundred water meters in the city.
I'll move approval of the quote to replace the meters.
We have a motion and a second to approve, the quote to replace these water meters, this is the process they've been working up for a while, so, they're working on that. On favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Let's move on to Public Works shed addition update. Again, Elizabeth.
Yeah, so I'll fill in for Public Works tonight, uh. So, um, as you know, one of the bigger purchases in the twenty-twenty-two budget was to do a shed addition, um, the city did post for quotes, um, in both our website and, and the newspaper, um, and talked to various companies, and, uh, we got different quotes for the different aspects of the job, and due to this past year, um, the prices were a lot higher than what our quotes were at last year when we created the budget, so this would put the project over budget, which, uh, I was, uh, not willing to approve at this point, and so we kinda came together and talked with Public Works to see if we could, um, find a solution, we also met with Councillor Johnson and Mayor Freeze, um, as part of the budget committee, and we decided the best route was to piecemeal it, and so, uh, we would like to just build the shell of the shed this year, and do the garage doors, would be more or less cold storage, and then the first priority for Public Works next year would be to do a concrete floor in both the old shed and the new shed, and then we would do heating and, uh, electric at that time as well.
Todd was agreeable with this as well, um, making, making the best of a bad situation, you can't control the prices, of course, so
And then this would keep the project within, uh, the budget.
And we'd still be able to get that shed done, so
I will move, uh, that we proceed with the Public Works shed addition as Ms. Howard, uh, laid out.
I have a motion, a second to approve the, uh, proposal for the shed, thanks for your work on this, again, it was a, not a process to have to deal with. On favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Before we get to the department updates, council, we have a visitor with us, he's a junior, pardon? Pardon?
Don't forget claims.
Move approval of claims.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor of approving claims, signify by saying aye?
Aye. She just wants to make sure she gets
Jump right over me, I got nothing, I got nothing to say.
We like to hear from you.
No, I've said enough.
Uh, council, we have a, we have a junior, uh, from the high school with us, he's working toward a legal project, and then allowing to introduce himself, his name's Evan. Evan, if you wanna come up and, to the lectern? Is that correct field?
Yeah.
You're looking a little pulled.
Just a little bit, but, um, yeah, like Mr. Freeze has said, my name is Evan Ferber, I'm a junior at Pine Island High School. Um, I'm with the Boy Scout troop number sixty-nine, Pine Island, Minnesota, and I'm working for my ego project, um, don't really have too many details on it though, other than ideas, and what my general plan for it is, is that, um, um, we're going to be doing some planning and renovation work at the, uh, Public Van Horn Library here in Pine Island, so, um, what that's going to include is kind of just uh, planning generally, um, getting resources and materials from local areas, as well as, um, getting some people together to, um, go and actually do the, uh, renovation and construction work there. As well as maybe construct some chairs and benches for the, um, patio area that's going to be constructed there as well, and donate those for, um, that, and that's pretty much all I have. But, um, thanks for letting me get up here and, uh, introduce that idea, um, it really means a lot to me, so I won't take up any more of your time.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Mr. Ferber gets to meet with our librarian over here, this is Rachel, you know, you know her, so uh, thanks for coming, Evan. You made a good time, you made the meeting lengthy, so um, council, let's move into department updates here, administration, library, we'll go with library.
I'm tired. I'm sure you all are, too, um, we've got a new program coming next month, starting the Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month, we're doing books and brews. It's gonna be kind of like a book club, but kind of like a, hey, what do you like in this kinda genre? So, um, we're gonna start with historical fiction, and we're gonna be meeting over at South by Southeast, so we can vibe, and then and we've got a lot of people saying yay, so come and join us, uh, it'll be six-thirty, um, that first Wednesday. Second Wednesday, of course, is our regular book club, we meet right here, this coming month, we're gonna be reading The Disappearing Spoon, which is all about different stories of the elemental table of the periodical table of elements, chemistry, um, and it's gonna be an interesting discussion, I think. Uh, we're also doing a book sale, uh, that during our community, uh, garage sale day weekend, so come on by the library, we'll be doing, uh, basically uh, you can pick bad books this year, we're not doing pre-bagged, but a ba- a bag of books is five bucks, so you can pick out your own books for that. Otherwise, my last thing is our summer reading program signup will be starting on May thirty-first. Our theme this year is reading off the beaten path, so look for a lot of fun outdoorsy, campy kind of programming, and I know Heidi's been really busy planning that right now, so we hope to see you soon at the library, thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. Yay. Fish does have some
I just have one thing, I just wanna do a quick plug, so, uh, I was approached by a community member last month about a community foundation that he wanted to put together, so me, him, and Janet Hankey of the Chamber met with Southeast Minnesota Initiative Foundation, um, that meeting went really well, and this community member wanted to move forward, so we are putting together a uh, broader meeting to meet with as many community members that wanna show up, that meeting is gonna be next Monday, April twenty-fifth, at five PM, right here on the second floor of City Hall. So, all community members are welcome to come to that, just kind of a information session, and then see about steps moving forward.
Do you wanna provide a
Five PM.
A little more context as to what a foundation organization typically does?
Are you gonna come?
Sure, yeah, a community foundation, it's a nonprofit organization that is able to donate, uh, back, usually in the forms of grants, uh, as far as what programs they fund, that's completely up to the foundation and their, uh, board of directors. Um, a lot of them do grants for businesses, they do grants for parks, you know, little things like, uh, pavilion and a new park, different stuff like that. Um, depends, uh, it all depends on the foundation itself, but there's a lot of directions they can go.
Okay, my original question when I saw the meeting notice was how a foundation differs from the Pine Island United Fund, and from my understanding, the difference in the United Fund is their funds have to go to an organization, not a separate, like you said, individual, like grant proposal someone may have.
Yep, yeah, yeah, the community foundation, it's much broader than that, my, uh, what I heard about that foundation, it's more like once a year, they get all the money and then they disperse it all. This is more of a revolving fund, year-round type of thing, that anybody from the community can donate to, and then continuous grants, depending on how much funding they have, but it's not like a once-a-year type of thing, it's revolving.
Right, right, I do think there is some community misunderstanding on the difference between those organizations, so it's nice to hear that information meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's all I had.
Thank you, man. Fire department, uh, is pretty intense during this month, um, they want to see what kind of tanks, you know, um, five, three, um, that are based on base of She got warm.
Only one, impressive.
Did move the drone, so we're good, we're good.
A little bit inexpensive, oops.
Go back to Elizabeth, more money.
Move to adjourn. Oop, oh, I thought you said, sorry. Thought you said there was anything else.
You save the, you save the best for last.
Yeah, right, um, a couple of things, uh, some events we have going on, uh, Coffee with the Deputy will be in Zambroda next week at Java Junction, um, next Wednesday from eight to nine-thirty, so if you're in the area and you wanna check out a new place, and then on May seventh, um, Deputy Josh Curdy is having the track shoot event, same as we did last year, with all the high schools, get together for the state tournament, and it's a good time, so if you're around, stop by, check it out.
Thank you, Jim. Big thank you to city staff, it was a busy, busy day today, so sorry it went so late, take an hour in the morning or something.
Move to adjourn.